Start.
Thank you ma'am. So, very good morning to everyone. We welcome Mr. T R Shankar Lohman, Senior Scientist at Nature Conservation Foundation, that will be sharing his experience on a long-term study on how birds come to rainforest fragmentation and restoration in Anamala Hills. First interest lies in areas like ecology and the conservation of tropical forests and wildlife, especially rainforest, barns, bulbs and mammals, mainly in the Western Ghats. He writes creative non-fiction and essays on nature and conservation for newspapers, magazines. He is also the author of the book The Wild Heart of India: Nature and Conservation in the City, the Country and the Void. He has also co-authored with Digiya Mudhabba, Philosopher, Life, Magnificent Trees of the Western Ghats. So, without any further delay, let's start for the exciting informative session. I would like to give some instructions for the students, like whatever questions we will be having, write in the chat box or you can unmute yourself and ask after the presentation. So, the stage is all yours. You can start. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. Can everyone hear me clearly?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, great. Yeah, well, thanks very much to symbiosis and the biodiversity cell for inviting me to talk to all of you today. I'm very happy to share some of our work from the Anamala Hills. The Anamala Hills is a part of the Western Ghats in India. And for more than two decades, we have been doing a range of research projects here, focused on the tropical rainforests. And my own work has to a large extent been on bird communities and birds in these landscapes. So, today I will talk to you a little bit about that work. And my aim here is to sort of give you a flavor of what the sort of questions we ask when we go out to study birds in the Western Ghats? And how do we do the studies in the field? And based on those studies, what kind of learnings are we able to arrive at? I've tried to keep it not too technical because I understand that, you know, there may be people here from various backgrounds. But I think as students who are in the biodiversity cell, I'm sure many of you are aware of these concepts and you're familiar with these ecosystems and probably with most of these bird species that I will be also talking about. So, a lot of the work that I'm going to present today, it's not just done by myself, but it's done by a team of people. We are based here in a long-term rainforest research station in the Anamala Hills. I've, you know, I've put photos here of some of the colleagues and students who have worked with us over the years. They have also watched birds and whatever we have learned and what I'm going to share today is thanks to a lot of fieldwork done by all these people over this period of time. So, I think all of you are probably aware of what tropical rainforests are. And I won't go into that in great detail, except to say that India also has some wonderful tropical rainforests. Or, you know, if you would like to call it by the sort of more technical name, you can say these are tropical wet evergreen forests. These are forests that are characterized by a very high annual rainfall. The rainfall is distributed across most months of the year. There is often only a shorter dry season. And thanks to that, the trees are mostly evergreen. And you can see here, this is a canopy shot of the forests that are just, you know, close by to where we are. The, these are dense forests with a wonderful diversity of species. Not just plants, but animals, a whole range of groups. These are unique ecosystems and very fascinating. India has tropical rainforests in the Western Ghats where all the work I'm going to present comes from. But we also have rainforests in northeast India, in the Andaman and Nicobar Islands as well. One of the major concerns when we talk about tropical rainforests is what we call fragmentation. And fragmentation is one of the consequences of the loss of forests. So, what is particularly important, of course, is losing forests. When a large tracts of forest are slowly lost for various things. It could be for industries, it could be for mining, it could be for reservoirs, it could be for agriculture. Or, as in the case of where I'm going to talk about plantations. The loss of forests itself is a serious concern. But one of the consequences of that loss of forests is that whatever forest is left is often reduced to smaller tracts. You have pieces of forest, what we call fragments, that are interspersed in the landscape which has a lot of people, other kinds of land uses. When you have fragmentation, not only is the sizes of the forest patches reduced, so what, you know, there's a reduction in area. But many of the patches can also be more isolated from each other. So, they tend to be far away from forests. So, an animal that's dependent on forests may find it difficult to move between patches if it is very isolated. And also based on how the fragments are shaped, it can also have an increased edge. And that's what ecologists call the edge effect. The edges of forests are susceptible to various kinds of sort of environmental pressures. Because it tends to be more dry, it tends to have much more light, it could have much faster wind speeds. So, the edges of forests are often very different in character from the interior of forests, which are much more well-protected. So, reduced area, increased isolation, increased edge are some of the, you know, changes that happen in these forest patches. Question then arises is how does this affect wildlife? Or how does it affect plants and animals that live or are, you know, found in these forests? So, that's the sort of a broad question that motivated our work, which we have been carrying out here. And this is not just a concern in the Western Ghats, but it's a global concern. You know, as you can see from this quote, from a paper, where the tropicals all over the world and particularly rainforests So, what we are left with is often fragmented. At the end of the century, most of the forests we have will be left in a fragmented, simplified and degraded state. And some scientists have even called these the living dead. Will these forests actually survive into the future? Are they just hanging on, you know, in these little remnants? So, there have been some grim predictions as well. People have said that as we lose these forests, we are going to lose our most memorable heritage of the 21st century. What E.O. Wilson has called, you know, the age of loneliness will result if we lose these forests and the incredible diversity that they have. And there is some justification to this. Because studies have shown in some parts of the world where you have extensive deforestation or loss of forests, many species have either declined and disappeared almost completely. Or they are hanging along in very small populations whose future is, you know, we don't know what their future is going to be. In our case, we wanted to understand what exactly is going on here in the Western Ghats. And the question that we asked was with relation to the birds that are found in these forests. What happens to birds when these extensive tracts of rainforest are broken up into smaller pieces or fragments? And then how do the rainforest birds respond when they are altered? When the forests, what earlier used to be a forest is now converted into a plantation like a tea plantation or a coffee plantation, a cardamom plantation and so on. While these questions are very important to understand how habitats are being transformed and what the impacts of the transformation is on, you know, the wildlife. We should also ask the question, is there something we can do to reverse these trends? If the trends are bad, is there something we can do to reverse them? So, a lot of our work over the last 20 years here has been to ask, to try and restore, ecologically restore these rainforests. The rainforests that are fragmented, that are degraded, try and bring them back to somewhat their original condition. And if we manage to do that, will it also help bring the rainforest birds back? So, that was the other question. So, with these three broad questions, we looked at the communities of birds found in in this area that I'm going to talk about. And what do I mean by a community? What is a bird community structure? Perhaps, you know, many of you may already be aware of this, but just sort of a, in simple words, a recap. Three aspects that we very often look at when we say community structure or, you know, bird community or plant community. One is the abundance. So, how many birds are there in a unit area? Abundance is like taking a census. We want to know what is their population size or what is the population density? That is the number of birds in a unit area. If I have a 10 hectare patch, does it have 50 birds? Does it have 100 birds? Does it have 500 birds? That is abundance. It's just the number of individual birds per unit area is abundance. Another aspect that we look at is the number of species. You know, what is often equated with biodiversity. Is the number of species fewer or more in, when we compare these different sites? The number of species is also, you know, referred to as species richness, species diversity. There are different indices to do this, but mostly I will try and stick to the simple one, which is the number of species. The third one is on who constitutes the community? That is what is called the bird species composition. So, sort of to explain this, you know, you, in your college, you may have, let's say, students from five different states. And I went to a college in Chennai. And that college also had students from five different states coming to study there. So, in a sense, the number of species or the number of types is the same in both, five and five. But when we look at composition, I'm asking the question, from which states are those students? Maybe you have students from Maharashtra and Gujarat and Madhya Pradesh and so on. Whereas my college would have students from Andhra and Tamil Nadu and Kerala. So, in terms of bird species composition, what we mean is the identity of species. It is not just how many species are there, but which ones are there? So, that's the sort of important aspect. So, if you take these three variables, abundance, the number of species and composition together, and you study how it is in different locations, you kind of get a sense of what is happening to the birds. And why are we studying birds in the first place? Because birds are often easy to see, easy to identify, they're very visible, you know, they sing and they call. So, it's, you can go into different habitats and monitor birds as, you know, all of you must have done in your own, in your own campus. And the birds then act as a sort of an indicator. By looking at what's happened to the birds, you get a sense of what is happening to their habitat and to the environment that they live in. So, that's the reason why we also looked at birds in order to answer these questions that are listed here on the slide. So, our study or what I'm going to talk to you about is from the Anamala Hills. For those of you who are not aware of this, the Anamala is a very important hill range found in the Western Ghats. The Western Ghats is a mountain range that runs along the west coast of India. Sahyadri, it is called more often in the north. And the Anamala Hills is just south of the Palakad Gap. And in the Anamala Hills, we have a large area of forest. And one very important conservation area is called the Anamala Tiger Reserve. And along with the Anamala Tiger Reserve, there is a large, which is nearly 1000 square kilometers in area. There is an area of about 200 square kilometers called the Walparai Plateau. Now, this plateau, which is, you can see in a slightly lighter color in this graph, is mostly converted to plantations historically. That is during the British period between 1890 and 1920, most or nearly all the rainforests in this region were converted to tea and coffee plantations, leaving small patches of forest, the patches that you see here in dark green. You can see that these are the fragments that we have gone in and studied. They range from patches of forest which are as small as 1 hectare to about 300 hectares within the Walparai Plateau. And there are some large tracts of forest which are still fortunately remaining inside the Anamala Tiger Reserve. So, this is the sort of landscape context. I have shown only the Tamil Nadu part in this map. And to the west and the south, there are more forest areas and they are all in Kerala. But most of our work has been in what I've shown here on the map. So, this is just to give you a sense of the geography. But what does the landscape actually look like? So, here is a photo of what the landscape we are talking about actually looks like on the ground. You can see in the center, there is a rainforest fragment, which is, you know, remaining. Although 100 years ago, most of the forests around have been removed. Here, there is a patch that has somehow survived. And there are different components and different elements of the landscape that you can see around it. You see, there are plantations of eucalyptus trees. You can see that most of the landscape is covered by tea plantations. You can see the tea, you know how open it is. It's a, and it's planted as a monoculture. It's a single crop. So, extensive areas are under tea monoculture. Then there are patches of eucalyptus, there are some coffee, there are settlements, there are roads. So, it is in this kind of landscape that we have much of the remaining forests today. So, we have gone in and studied birds in the fragments. And then inside the Anamala Tiger Reserve, in the more extensive forests. And we have also gone and looked at what's happening in the tea, in the coffee and so on. So, I'll first talk about our results and, you know, what we found when we studied birds in the rainforests. But how do we go about doing that? So, to study birds and rainforests, we mostly use a method which is called a point count survey. A point count survey is fairly simple. You walk into the forest and you stop at particular points which are distributed right through the patch or distributed inside the forest. And you stop at those points for five minutes duration. And you kind of scan quietly all around and note down all the birds that you see or hear calling in a in a sort of a 50 meter radius around you. And that becomes a survey. And we repeat this many times through the site to get a sense of, okay, what are the, what's the kind of community of birds that we have in this patch? And like I said, we've done this not just in the forest, but also in tea, coffee, in cardamom plantations and other sites. And over the years, and like I said, we've been doing this work over many years and with multiple students. Over the years, we have gathered more than 2200 such point counts in the various forest patches. Another 600 or so in the tea and coffee and other landscape elements around. And use that data to try and understand what's happening to the birds. And, you know, those of you who use eBird and are into bird watching, we have also, you know, uploaded all this data to eBird so that it's part of a global database, which helps us to track what's happening to our birds nationwide. Besides studying the birds, in order to understand what's going on really, we need to also measure the habitats. Get a sense of how is the forest, what is the status of the forest? How degraded is it or how intact is it? And this we do with a different kinds of methods. So, for instance, we put out plots called quadrants. Or we do point-centered quarter plots. These are different sampling methods where you go into the forest and these are used largely to measure the trees. We count the trees, we measure their girth and all of this helps us to understand what is the density of trees in this patch? You know, how many trees are there per hectare? How many species of trees are there? Which species are they? We know the composition. And what is the basal area, which is the total area that is under sort of wooden, wood biomass in the side. So, these are some measurements you get. Then we also measure the canopy, which is very important in a rainforest. As I showed in the first slide, you have almost closed canopy is a very typical feature of most rainforests. So, we stop at different locations and we measure using these reflective mirror devices. What is the canopy cover overhead? We use a range finder to measure the height and measure overlap of branches, different attributes, which gives us a sense of the canopy cover. And also the structure of foliage. How high, how is the foliage distributed? In a plantation, sometimes you have all the foliage only in one layer, either high up or low down. Whereas in a forest, you tend to have foliage at different levels. So, that gives you a sense of the vertical structure of the forest. And then there are also shrubs and understory. So, by measuring all of this, you get a good sense of what the habitat is like. And then you try and relate the two. If habitat is changing in this way, you know, is it affecting the birds in a particular way? Let me just stop very briefly here and ask if everyone can still hear me clearly?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. So, based on this, this kind of fieldwork, we then try to, you know, I'm not going into all the details of analysis, but just to give you a sense of some of the results we obtained when we studied birds like this. So, one thing that was clear to us is that we looked at an analysis called indicator bird species analysis. And this is in relation to the size of the fragment. So, on this figure here, if you look at the bottom, you can see that it's the x-axis goes from very small patches, zero to 1 hectare in a small patches of forest. So, on the right side, you have very large tracts of forest which are inside the Anamala Tiger Reserve. And then we looked at our data and looked at the birds and said, okay, how abundant are these birds in the small patches and the large patches etc. And using that data, we try and identify if there are particular thresholds below which or above which a species sort of appears or disappears. And what you see in the top part of this graph is that there is a large number of birds which are actually open country birds. They are not actually rainforest birds at all. You probably have them in your towns and, you know, in cities. I know birds like common tailorbirds and red whisker bull bulls or macpadd robins, which you might have in your campus and several of these species. And those species, they tend to decrease in abundance as the size of the rainforest patch increases. So, as the patch becomes bigger and bigger, these species decline. And eventually, more, most of them even disappear. So, in larger patches of rainforest, you don't find them. But small fragments, you find some open country birds as well. On the other hand, there is a number of larger, number of rainforest birds. You know, birds like the Malabar krogon, nilgiri flycatcher, which is an endemic bird, crimsonback sunbirds and so on. There are many such species which are listed here, which are typically found only in rainforest. You will not see them in the middle of towns and cities by and large. These birds tend to increase as the size of the fragment area increases. But what this graph, you know, is, what I'd like to highlight from this graph is that although this pattern is there, if you see most of the lines and the coloring is close to very small a fragment sizes, you know, right towards the left of the graph. What that means is the threshold is actually very small. It's less than 100 hectares for most birds, but less than 20 hectares for a lot of species. In other words, even a patch of forest which is about 20 hectares in area, which is not very large at all, can still have a lot of rainforest birds manage to survive there, you know, and continue to survive. And that's in a sense a positive thing for us. Because historically, we have lost a lot of forests and we now have landscapes where lots of forests is left as fragments. But the good thing is that these fragments still contain quite a bit of the original diversity of birds and therefore they are worth conserving. Another result that we got, and again, you know, although I put four graphs here, just look at the top row. The top row is looking at the number of species again in relation to how large the area of the forest patches. So, the x-axis is again area and on the y, we have the number of species. And in simple words, if I have to sort of describe what this pattern is saying, is that the number of species, if I just look at how many species there are, it is more or less the same whether the patch is really small, 1 hectare, 10 hectare or whether it is more than 4000 hectares in area. The number of bird species that I get in that patch is more or less the same. And it's not changing much in relation to area, which is an interesting result, very different from what has been found in other places. On the right side, what you see is the effect of time, that is between 2000 and 2019. And you can see that green line is almost flat. What that suggests is that in these forest patches, the number of species also hasn't changed much over time. And this seems very promising. Overall, losses, you know, fragmentation is not having much effect on number of species. And even after 20 years, more or less, the species richness has stayed the same. However, what is of concern is the graph on the bottom right. What is, what I presented there is the abundance of birds, that is their populations, their numbers. The numbers of these birds are showing a declining trend over time. There's some variation there, but when we look at our data here closely, what we have found is that there appears to be a 20 to 25% decline over in the abundance. So, many of these birds are actually declining in their populations over. And this is despite the fact that these forests have been protected almost continuously in 20 years. You know, the Anamala Tiger Reserve has existed and the forests are protected. So, even in these protected forests, we are seeing some decline in the abundance of birds. And that is a cause of worry, which we don't know the reason for yet. And this is true also if we look just at what we call the endemic birds. Now, these birds are particularly important. Say flamethrowered bull bull or, you know, white-bellied blue flycatcher and so on. These are birds that are found only in the Western Ghats. So, if they decline here, if they disappear from here, that's a global extinction. And what we find is that the graph on the left is showing data from our study just here in the Anamala Hills. You can see that in 20-year period, most of those birds are showing a decline. We recently did a survey of Malabar grey hornbills, another endemic bird, that is also showing a decline both inside the Anamala Tiger Reserve as well as in the fragmented landscape. And that species has now been uplisted to a vulnerable species in the IUCN Red List. So, many of our endemic birds are declining. And this trend is not just in the Anamala Hills. The graph that you see on the right side comes from a report called the State of India's Birds Report. You know, I've given you the website link there. Please go and take a look at it if you have not already seen it. And this has analyzed birds all over India. And when they looked at the Western Ghats birds, all the species that are endemic to Western Ghats, what you see here is the red line, that is the line marked C, is the trend in population of the endemic birds of the Western Ghats. So, many of these endemic birds are also declining, not just here in the Anamala, but all along the Western Ghats. And that is a matter of worry. We don't fully know what the reasons are, but it could be because of the loss of their unique habitats, particularly the dense evergreen rainforests, which is where many of the endemic species are found. So, this is the sort of transformation that we are talking about here. You know, for instance, on the right side, you have a forest which is mature, old-growth forest. The sort of thing that has not been much disturbed by human activities. But on the left, you see a forest which is like a secondary forest, meaning it has been logged in the past. Maybe somebody has planted something and then abandoned it. Maybe it was, it got partly burnt in a fire. And so, you have only few tall trees and you have a lot of other regenerating vegetation. You can see that the habitat is very different. So, it is because it is much more open that some of the open country birds, like the tailorbirds and others, there's a tailorbird just calling outside as I speak. The tailorbirds and others are able to colonize this kind of open habitats. But whereas the more endemic species, like the white-bellied blue flycatcher and the Malabar grey hornbill, require much better habitat as you see on the right. So, the more degraded these forests become, possibly we will lose some of these endemic species of the Western Ghats. Or we will see further population declines. So, to summarize the key findings about this rainforest part of the work is that at the landscape level, fragmentation may increase species richness a little bit. Why? Because you have species like Why? Because you have species like the tailorbird and the red biscuit bull bull, these open country birds, that manage to come and occupy some of the fragments. But, uh, when the patches, uh, shrink in size, it affects some rainforest birds. But like I said, fortunately, with small area thresholds, which means that many small patches, still retain quite a few of the rainforest birds and therefore they are worth protecting. Our research also showed that the quality of the habitat matters much more than the area of the habitat. So if you have a forest that has a good canopy, closed canopy cover, a lot of dense trees, and you know, more typical like in the previous photo I showed you, the more like the forest on the right, then it will support a lot of species, even if the path size is quite small. Yeah? So these are some key findings. And we also are worried about the decline in rainforest birds that we are seeing, for which the causes are still unknown. Uh, one aspect that we have learned over these years by studying birds in these rainforests and in the fragments, is that it's not just, uh, import enough for us to look at what's happening inside the patches of forest. You also need to understand what is going on around the forest patches, which is a completely different landscape. Like in the photo I showed at the beginning, there are forest paths which might be surrounded by tea plantations or by coffee plantations. How does that affect what birds manage to survive? So that's, uh, another, uh, question that we have looked at. And you can see, uh, as in this, uh, slide which I've just put, that tea plantations are a completely different landscape and a kind of habitat as compared to rainforests. It's a monocrop, almost all the foliage and vegetation is in a single layer at the shrub level which is tea. And, uh, most often they plant, they have this very sparse shade, um, using a single tree species called silver oak, which you can see on the left. Very rarely do you get some tea plantations where they use mixed trees, different native trees, mixed with the tea. So we tried to go in and look at tea plantations which are conventional like this. They may be, uh, using chemicals or they may be organic tea as well. So is organically better than the conventional chemical tea? Uh, is the tea where they have these kinds of shade trees, native shade trees better than the others? These are the sort of questions we asked when we looked at tea plantations. And as always, we compare it to the rainforest. Because this is the original landscape, you know, these are the original vegetation which has been converted to tea. So even when we study tea, we, in the middle of this figure, you can see the tea plantations and you can see a rainforest fragment on the right and the continuous forest on the left. So this is the sort of, uh, study that we did, uh, when we looked at birds. And we were, we came to a fairly surprising, uh, initial finding, which was that when I look at the abundance of birds, uh, the highest abundance of birds we found in the tea plantation. Now, a lot of people think tea is monoculture and it's a green desert, you don't find anything there. That's, that's not true. You do find quite a bit of species and wildlife there. And in this case, we found that tea plantations which had, native shade trees, not that silver oak, not just that one tree, but when they had a multiplicity of trees, then it actually had more overall abundance of birds as compared even to the rainforests. But as I mentioned earlier, this is because you have open country birds like the red biscuit bull bulls, coming in and using these plantations besides some of the forest birds, which also managed to use the trees in the, in the tea plantations. If I look only at the rainforest birds, because my quest, my interest here is more on the rainforest birds. That's the original vegetation. What is happening to the rainforest birds? What's happening to the endemics? Then the pattern is quite different. You see here that the rainforest fragments and the rainforest patches, the continuous tracts of forest, they have much more, uh, uh, rainforest birds than any of the tea plantations. So we cannot assume that tea plantations will manage to support rainforest birds. We need to protect those forest patches for birds. But another interesting thing is that you see that the conventional tea, the chemical, uh, which uses chemical fertilizers and pesticides, has more or less the same kind of birds as an organic tea. We found slight increase in organic tea, maybe about twenty percent, ten to twenty percent higher, uh, richness and abundance of birds in organic tea. So going organic, which is a big move these days, does help a little, but it doesn't make too much of a difference. But in the tea plantation, if you manage to bring in a diversity of tree species, if you bring in some jackfruit, a ficus and a few others, rather than just having one tree, which is silver oak, then many more bird species come and start using the tea plantations. Because they can come for the fruits on the ficus trees, they will come for the flowers of some of the other, uh, flowering trees. So many species that would otherwise have nothing in a tea plantation, they won't find their food in tea plantation, are able to, uh, use the mixed shade tea plantations. So if you have a forest fragment which is surrounded by a conventional tea plantation, you can imagine that the surrounding landscape doesn't have many of the rainforest birds, because it is a monoculture and it has a lot of chemical use. But if, over a period of time, if the tea plantations could be persuaded to use some native shade trees, they need some shade for the tea. So instead of using just one silver oak, if they planted, you know, five to ten different species or even more native species, then not only could you have the tea cultivation going on, you could also support more bird life in the surrounding landscape. And if there are more forest birds in the surrounding landscape, we have found that it is also often better for the fragments itself. And so that's the sort of key findings from our study on tea plantations. There are many birds even in tea, but very few rainforest species. By converting it to organic, you get some small gains. But if you really want to make a, a, a significant difference, you need to bring in more shade trees and particularly the native shade trees which are found in that region to be used along with, uh, tea cultivation. Sort of similar questions we, uh, looked at in coffee. Now, coffee plantations in many ways are environmentally and for wildlife, a much better form of land use than tea. So if there are tea and coffee drinkers among you, so here is, uh, something for you to think about when you have your next, next cup. Uh, you are connected to where these crops come from. And, uh, uh, eh, many of the coffee plantations, because coffee is a crop that grows under shade of trees, you find that, uh, much more diversity of species are actually sustained in coffee plantations. You can see two kinds of coffee plantations here. It's not that all coffee plantations are the same. On the left side, you have a coffee plantation. Well, there are trees, but again, most of them are silver oak trees, which is just a, uh, it's an Australian tree, it's a single species. So that's not very great. On the right side, you see a coffee plantation, which is using a, a large number of native trees. These are actually rainforest trees, under whose shade coffee is being cultivated. And our work has shown that, the, uh, coffee plantations such as those on the right have to support more rainforest birds and are, uh, slightly better for conservation. Uh, so when you have, you know, uh, in this, in this slide, I'm trying to show you what the landscape level sort of effect of these things are. So you have a rainforest fragment, uh, on the left side, which is abating the coffee plantation. So look at that edge. You can just make out some change from slightly denser tree color to more sparse tree cover. But there is some tree cover, which also helps, uh, you know, which also has quite a few rainforest birds. But on the right side, you have a rainforest fragment, which is surrounded by tea plantations and there's also a reservoir, you know, very, very open habitats. So most of the forest birds will be completely absent in the surrounding landscape. We call this high and low landscape level connectivity. And this also influences what you find inside the forest fragment. So it's not just the structure of the frag- fragment itself, but what kind of land use and landscape is around these that influences what birds are found there. So those were some of the, uh, key findings from that part of the study. The structure of the habitat is an important influence on, on birds, especially if you have a lot of native trees. But the surrounding habitat also matters, matters a lot. But all said and done, even the best coffee estates still lack many rainforest bird species. Because there are different layers of foliage that are missing. Coffee is grown as a shrub layer and there are some, you know, medium sized and tall trees, but most of the dense understory and so on is missing. So you have a lot of species like the Malabar trogans and the falvetas and the white-bellied blue flycatcher and so on, which are, uh, either very sparse or absent even in the best, so-called best coffee plantations. Um, just to come to the last part of my talk, which is, uh, we now have some understanding of what happens when forests are either degraded or fragmented or converted to other crops such as tea and coffee. But what do you do with a degraded fragment? Do we just wait and watch to see what happens to it? In which case, you know, uh, the, they may continue to degrade over time. So as you can see in this graph, there's a line that shows over time continues degradation. Or maybe you just sit and wait and perhaps it'll automatically recover now, and that's, that could also happen. Or if you're seeing a trend of degradation, is there something you can do, uh, to bring it back? And that's shown by the black line here, the black dotted line, which is what we say, uh, when we talk about ecological restoration. So over the last two decades, we've been engaged in a rainforest restoration project here. I'm not going to give you the details of it, because next week, uh, Divya, uh, Muthapa will be talking to you about our, uh, restoration work. What is restoration and how it is done. But just to give you a sense of one of our sites here, you can see, this is a site, what it looked like before the restoration was carried out. And you're on the right side, you can see what it looks like today, where there is, you know, after, uh, fifteen years of, uh, recovery of forest. So we asked the question that if the forest recovers, are the birds also coming back? And again, the same sort of methods were deployed. We did the point counts and the vegetation surveys and the results are somewhat promising. The way we did this is by comparing our restored sites, where we actually did the restoration, with adjoining sites, which were just left as this. You know, they are unrestored sites. Maybe if you just leave them alone, nature knows best, it'll recover on its own. You don't have to actually do restoration. So you have to always compare a restored site with unrestored site. In addition, you also want to compare with our benchmark sites, that is the intact forests. Because I want to know if with restoration, is the recovery in bird communities and forest communities increasing to the levels that we see in these undisturbed forests? So when we did this comparison, we found results that look somewhat like this. The highest number of rainforest bird species were in the benchmark rainforest, as you know, you would expect. And, uh, the restoration sites showed some significant increase in rainforest bird species. But even after fifteen years of work and even after substantial recovery of forests, you can see that it is not at the same level as what you find in the rainforests, uh, in the undisturbed rainforest. So there is promising recovery. Just leaving a site alone and hoping that it recovers, uh, may not have as much of an effect, particularly in fragments, as actively trying to do restoration to bring back the forest. So that's one finding here. And I, I'll, I'll just conclude with that, uh, to say that, uh, overall, the picture that we get here is that we, when we talk about rainforests and rainforest fragmentation, our studies are showing that even small patches of forest have value. And in a fragmented landscape, it's important to conserve all of them, the small and the large. And particularly, if you have intact tracts of forest, you must protect them, you know, from further degradation. Because they have the, uh, often the best, uh, diversity as well as many of the endemic species are found there. But it's not just the forest patches themselves we should focus on, but also the surrounding landscape. Can we do something to make the surrounding landscape better? So for instance, here we try and work with the plantation companies, the tea and coffee, to try and plant more native trees as shade trees for their crop. By doing that, they will continue to be able to grow their tea or coffee, but will also be able to support conservation in the, uh, long run. So ecological restoration can play a, a role in bringing back forests and biodiversity. But it's a limited role. We may never get back what we have lost in the intact forests. Uh, but in the fragments, our work is showing that just leaving them alone for a long period of time may not, uh, help in recovering the forest or the biodiversity. Nature may need a helping hand from us to, uh, uh, to bring, to, to bring back the diversity. And, uh, as I mentioned, there is a, uh, very important need to protect these mature and primary forests, because they are irreplaceable. We cannot assume that because, uh, you know, planting some trees or, uh, making these kind of small changes in land use, uh, uh, bird diversity in the landscape increases, that we can do away with these, uh, intact forests. They, those forests are still irreplaceable. So whatever remains of those mature and primary undisturbed forests, uh, it's very important that we continue to protect them. I'd like to end here with, uh, thanks to a large number of, uh, people in our team. Many students, our assistants, colleagues, collaborators, volunteers have helped in this work, the work over the years. Uh, the Tamil Nadu and Kerala Forest Departments, uh, have provided permits for our research. Uh, the plantation companies in the animalize supported our work in this landscape and a range of different funding agencies supported our research here. Uh, and as I mentioned, we have a, a team of people working here at our research station, without which this work would not have been possible. So, uh, thank you very much and I'll stop here. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to discuss with you.
Okay. Uh, Shankar, I just, I want to ask, is this photo real? Sorry, too sorry to ask, where these three, uh, great hornbills are flying?
No, it's a, it's a painting. I've mentioned here by Sataj Guman, as mentioned here on the top right.
Yeah.
So it is, yeah, but it is, uh, it's definitely, I mean, he's actually painted this looking at one of the forest fragments here in this landscape. And it is possible, we do see this site there. You know, we see great hornbills coming, uh, even to visit, uh, small patches of forest, especially if they have a nice fruiting tree there. Uh, and I think one day in the field we spent with him, we actually saw this. And he then went back and painted, uh, this, uh, thing. So this painting is Sataj's, it's not a photograph.
Oh, this is beautiful. For, really, I, for first glance, I thought it's a photo.
Yes. Let me just, uh, stop sharing the screen and then perhaps, uh, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so thank you, sir, for this wonderful, uh, filled one presentation that we just had. I mean, we are just, uh, watching it, like, how detailed the, the presentation was. Okay, so I'd like to ask, like, students who have put questions in the chat box, will you please ask your question while I'm muting? Yeah. Uh, the first one is from Ananya Singh. Uh, what time of the day are point sound surveys conducted?
Yes. So bird point counts are usually conducted in the morning, because bird activity we know is highest in the morning. And they tend to then decline during the day, particularly in the middle part of the day. And then there's a slight increase in the afternoon, but it's nothing like the kind of activity you see in the morning. So most of our work starts, you know, um, just after sunrise. So between six, six thirty in the morning, depending on the month, that's roughly when we start the day's survey. And we usually end by about nine, nine thirty in the morning. So that's the best period of time in terms of bird activity and calling and singing and, and all of that. And I didn't mention that, uh, we don't do the bird surveys throughout the year. We do it mostly between December and April, or, you know, extending a little bit into May. And the reason we do that is that between this December and April is when we have all the migrant birds. There are a lot of migrants that come from the, you know, uh, north, eh, to the Western Ghats. We have the migrants and you also have the resident birds. A lot of the resident birds which live here throughout the year, they start breeding in by, you know, December, January and February. So they, the resident birds are also there, the migrant birds are also there. So it's a good time. The weather is also good at this time. It's not the monsoon. Uh, we don't have heavy rain and mist and clouds. So that's the best time of year and the time, time of day to carry out point counts.
Yeah, thank you, Scott. So I can see a next question, like what is jackknife? I I guess.
Yes, yes, yeah. So uh a good question and I didn't go into the sort of analysis methods. But I have to explain it in simple words. I think in your own campus, you may have seen that you go there to do birding. You go one day and you record say twenty species of birds. You go another day and you see another twenty-two species of birds. Some were seen the previous time and some are new, right? So by repeating the surveys over a period of time, you start recording more and more species and you get an idea of what is the total number of species found in a site. But if you've done work for long enough, you realize that 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 total never actually settles. It it continuously increases. If you do work for one year or two years or three years, you will always, there will be this rare bird, there will be a vagrant. So the bird uh species richness, when we try and estimate or measure that, this is always a problem. That whatever amount of fieldwork you've done or survey you've done, it is often inadequate to measure what is the true species richness. So in, if I have to say it in other words, uh if I've gone and done, you know, forty-five point counts and I've recorded, let's say fifty bird species, the question I'll ask is how many species I have missed? I've recorded fifty, but I may have missed some. So the jackknife is a kind of statistical estimator of how many bird species I may have missed. So it uh it uses a a formula to, based on how I'm detecting new species as my sampling effort increases, to say, okay, if in the last time I have got three additional new species with a single detection, if I increase my survey a little more, I might get this many additional species. So it uses that statistical property. And that's called the jackknife method to estimate what is the likely species richness in a site, including species that you may have missed during your search.
Thank you, thank you. So I can see hands raised by Rishita Farma. Or Rishita, she could unmute and ask her questions. Yeah, Rishita, she could ask her question.
Hello, sir.
Hello.
Yeah.
Hello, Rishita.
Yeah, so this was about the forest, but what about in the cities? Because in the cities, this uh growth, growing industrialization is really difficult for the birds and especially for the migratory birds. So even if the plant tree is there, they will be cut down for another building, uh building a bed, building. So how does it, how can we help these birds?
Yeah, very good question and very uh important issue for India to today, because we are seeing increasing urbanization and also concretization. You know, all open spaces, background is also concretized. So even ground birds don't have uh you know, uh habitat. It's not just the trees. It's a little wetlands, wetlands get filled up and built over as parking lots. Uh the ground surface is covered by concrete, so ground birds disappear, wetland birds disappear. And when you lose the trees, you lose that. But there is a lot of effort now to sort of understand that urban biodiversity is very significant. Actually, you know, although people say Western Ghats so important and you know, Animalai Hills, it's a, we do have very important species here. But if I looked at the total list of bird species for the whole of Animalai, it will be less than the number of species in Delhi. Despite all its urbanization, Delhi has a huge number of bird species that are found there. You know, in the Delhi ridge, in the wetlands and so on. So today, people are recognizing that a lot of biodiversity is also found in urban areas. And there is research that tries to identify, just like we measure habitat, what are the attributes in urban situations that allow most birds to persist? There is a recent research study done in India by Monica Koshik and others from Wildlife Institute of India. There's a research paper, you could look it up, where they look at urban birds in Indian cities and what uh helps their numbers and populations and diversity to thrive. So once we understand that, we can try and retain those. So it could be home gardens. It could be, you know, preventing concretization of areas that don't really require concrete. And green spaces, integrating green spaces when you're developing areas, all of these could play a role.
Thank you, sir.
Excuse me, sir, I had a question. Uh you mentioned that we still don't know the causes for the alarming decline in abundance of rainforest birds. So do you have any current theories for that?
Um we have two uh uh sort of ideas or, you know, uh for this. It could be because of, one is that it could be because of overall climate change. Because it is happening not just in the fragmented forests, it is also happening in intact forests. Impact forests that have been protected, deep, you know, inside the Animalai Tiger Reserve. There, there has been no tree cutting, nothing uh that has happened there, but still the birds are declining. Which suggests that it could be a much wider, a global change, which is affecting these forests. And the similar results have come from other tropical forests also, where people are seeing declines in uh density and abundance of uh density and diversity of rainforest birds in intact regions of mature forest. It may be because the forest is stressed, maybe trees are dying because of climate change. Uh it could be because of parallel declines in fruiting and declines in the insect abundance. All of this, there is research from different locations which suggests that climate could be driving this broad trend. The other one is that we still have not reached a point where these forests are completely free of stress. So even today, they are undergoing degradation. So it's just because you've protected an area and called it Tiger Reserve or this thing doesn't mean it is not free of degradation. You still have the old roads, the logging roads going through them. You still have uh remnants of that past degradation. Uh when you have storms, lot of trees get knocked over along these roads, which opens up the forest. Uh weeds have invaded into many of them. Power lines cutting through the forests caused degradation. So that even though these are intact larger tracts of forests, which are notionally protected, they may be undergoing internal degradation, uh which we haven't been managed to measure at very fine scale. That could also be driving this pattern, but we don't know the real reason.
Thank you, sir. So I really loved this presentation and the entire talk. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Ananya. So coming to next question, we have from Somil Divedi. So he's asking for fragmentation and not manage to on side of a, you can talk about.
Uh sorry, I uh hear you clearly, but I see the message in the chat. Is forest fragmentation a reason for some southern birds migrating to northern side of Western Ghats? I don't know if uh you know, that is likely. There is no reports of such long-range movements triggered by forest fragmentation. And many of these birds are actually quite sedentary. Uh of course, there are some like flycatchers and so on that do move uh uh and bull bulls that could move a larger area. But many of the rainforest birds are quite sedentary. Uh in other studies, they have shown that when you have in forest fragmentation, birds move short distance and compress into uh remaining forest patches. So whatever patches remain, suddenly you'll get an increase in abundance of birds. And then that's, they don't manage to survive there and slowly they decline over time. So that's called compression and uh decline. That kind of thing has been seen. What we are seeing with maybe birds like frogmouth and several others is could be that today we are surveying areas. There is a lot more people who are observing birds and they are surveying all along the Western Ghats. So maybe we are detecting species which were very sparse or quite rare in more areas. And that's why we're seeing slight increases in their distributional range. At least, you know, I I don't have a full answer for you, but that could be uh what's going on.
Thank you, sir. So we have next question from Fraksh. Uh she's asking, apart from birds, do you observe anything similar in other fauna species?
Uh to an extent, yes. So we have done, because we've been based here for twenty years. Uh we've had a number of other uh students and researchers here who've looked at different uh groups. Of course, we have studied plants itself, you know, plant communities, shrubs and trees and and so on. We've studied the groups like frogs, reptiles, spiders, um arboreal mammals, that's like the squirrels and monkeys that are found here. Uh the small carnivorous mammals, like the civets and mongooses, that we've had. So, a different studies have happened in this landscape. And if you ask me what, if there's anything similar that we see, one, one aspect that is somewhat similar is that we uh is the importance of small patches of forest. It is not that only large patches of forest will have diversity. We find, for instance, there are some endemic and endangered amphibians which are found in forest patches as small as one hectare to ten hectares. So uh especially provided the quality of the patch is good. So it's not the area, but the quality that's quite important is something that is similar. But when I say quality, it could be different aspects of quality for these different groups. So for for birds, rainforest birds, it might be uh how many trees there are and how dense the vegetation is. But for frogs, it might be how many perennial streams there are in the habitat. So that's the sort of uh uh, you know, learnings we've got from different fauna groups.
Uh thank you, sir. We'll take one last question. This is for fitness time.
Uh Krani, uh first of all, can you ask Adricha or you, can you put feedback form in the chat box, please? We forgot to do that. Uh so team do that. And meantime, if there are any question directly from audience, you can ask, you can ask directly the question.
I would, I would like to ask Nishant to unmute and ask your question. Meantime, Adricha, you can share the feedback, yeah.
So those who are here, you can please uh fill out the feedback form also. Sorry, hiya.
Uh hello, sir. I'm Amit Yudhi. I'm from S I B, sir. Sir, I have a question that uh you mentioned about sampling methods and you mentioned about uh this jackknife method as well.
Yeah.
Uh do you stick to the one sampling method or you conduct really a sort of sampling method as well in order to get the holistic approach?
So the sampling method varies according to the study, but because a lot of our studies, we wanted to have comparisons. You know, when you want to make comparisons between, say, uh different types of forest or between forest and coffee and tea, um it's very important that you use the same sampling method. And since we started off by using point counts, in a fragmented landscape, point counts work very well. Because I can just go to a point and start my observation. The other common methods are like transects, where you walk five hundred meters, three hundred meter long trails and look at birds. But that's not suitable in a fragmented landscape, because you know, small patches, I can't put a long transect through. Because we started with point counts, we decided to use point counts for most of our work. For some very specific studies, we have used slightly modified methods, where we have walked transects. And you know, some, even the vegetation surveys have been slightly different when we needed to measure additional variables. But by and large, because our objective was to use a uniform method for comparison, we used one, just point counts.
Okay, sir. Thank you, sir.
Uh Shankar, I would like to uh tell you that when you mentioned that there is always when you go in the field, there is something that you are going to miss and you a new bird or new thing is going to be added every time you go. And this is really true for me, because in the campus, since two thousand sixteen, we are doing documentation. Till today, when I go uh out, there is something new I find. So this is something, means today's session is complete an eye-opener for me. And I must tell that that I attended this as a first-handed student. This everything you told is fitting so well in the, I can say, missed uh loop. And I guess now I'm going to look at the study, what we have done in more serious and scientific way. I may get, uh you know, uh contacting, uh what kind of study I can do in our fragment uh areas.
Sure, sure. Yes, that's nice. Thank you. And yeah, I am happy to help if you're planning to refine your observations uh and bird surveys going forward.
Yeah.
I see a couple of other questions. I just wanted to, there's a question from Nishant on our first station, just wanted to quickly say that keep it and then I'm going to Divya next uh next week, because she will be talking about uh music restoration and lots of that particular point next week, next Sunday.
Yeah.
Absolutely. After all the great uh for the presentation, I'd like to ask the students to unmute one. I I'm sorry, uh put their camera on, because it's been for the session. So guys, if anyone can turn on the.
Uh we want to take one last group photo. So uh just open your video. Uh again, I want to tell students, those who are here and want to ask questions, you can uh with the uh means with the permission of Shankar. I don't want to miss students asking questions, because it is a really wonderful session. Uh and since we can see that the study, more than a decade you have spent, you know, all your efforts and time and so it's such a wonderful uh thing in front of us now. So students, if you have any question, uh don't stop, uh go ahead and.
Yeah, thank you, ma'am. So I'd like to conclude with a word of thanks.
Okay.
Uh thank you for the wonderful presentation. I love it so much and it was so informative. Starting with the calypso, key monoculture, point count survey and PCQ plots, ending with the rainforest recovery. So we'd love to have more of such sessions in the future. And hopefully next week, Ram is coming. So it's a wonderful experience for us. We on behalf of S I B Diversity Sales, thank you again. So that's thank you, sir.
Thank you very much for inviting me and uh very happy to uh join you all this morning. Bye.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you so much.